You're good to go.
Thank you. Okay, we will call this council meeting of June 9th to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unseated lands of the Mi'kmaq. And for the record of attendance, we do have regrets from councillor Cleveland. We have a motion to. Hey councillor Dares, second by councillor Bell. All those in favor? Aye, contrary. Motion carried. Absent with regrets, that's, we just did that. Declarations of conflict of interest, anyone? Can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda, do we have any additions or deletions? Go ahead councillor or deputy.
Can we add paint the park?
Sure can. Okay, anything else? We have a motion to approve with the. Item added councillor Bell Hatfield, second by councillor Heather Hatfield. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, contrary. Motion carried, thank you. Approval of minutes, town council, May the 12th, please. Deputy mayor, second by councillor Heather Hatfield. All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, special town council, May 12th. Deputy mayor, second by councillor Dares. Any discussion there? All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, thank you. Committee of the whole, May 26th, please. Councillor Lesser, second by councillor Hatfield, Heather. All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Okay, so we have a public hearing. And I'll read the, the item. And. Commercial vehicle parking in residential area and site-specific development agreement. To approve second reading to a text amendment to the MPS and LUB. To create enabling policies that would allow commercial vans larger than. Six thousand eight hundred and four kilograms or fifteen thousand pounds. To be permanently permitted on the residentially zoned lots by development agreement and. That council approves second reading to a site-specific development agreement to allow one commercial van. Of up to eight thousand six hundred and eighteen kilograms, nineteen thousand pounds. To be parked at 170 Pleasant Street. PID 90209198. So, we're at a public hearing, so I'll ask three times. If anybody wants to speak to this, I don't. We don't discuss this now, CAO, we don't discuss this now. I can ask three times, but I don't see anybody online with us. And we didn't receive anything. I guess we can forego that councillor Lesser, were you going to? Did you have a question or?
No, I was just gonna ask if there's anybody actually online to speak about it, but like.
Yeah. I don't. Thank you for that, and I don't see anybody, and Lindsay, we didn't get any emails or anything.
We did not.
Okay. Alright, so this will come up in the business arising. On 9B, food bank development. And that is to approve second reading to amend the MPS and LUB. To change the permitted uses section listed under the O1 zone to allow existing institutional uses. Regardless of whether they are contained within an existing building. And amend the definition of existing to exempt institutional uses which are located within the O1 zone. Okay, so the same thing applies here, we didn't receive anything on this one. And we have no one here, so they will be in our business upcoming. Okay? So business arising, number 10, 10A, noise bylaw amendments re fireworks. The recommended motion there is that council approves second reading to amend the noise bylaw to include. A, ban the use of consumer fireworks within the town of Yarmouth. Except on recognized religious holidays, Canada Day, New Year's Eve, Natal Day, the Seafest Parade of Lights. And extend the authority to the CAO to provide a written exemption for other similar events. And B, require signage be displayed at retail displays of fireworks informing consumers of the ban. Okay, so we're looking for that motion. Okay councillor Lesser, second by deputy mayor. Is there any discussion on this one? Does this will go through tonight if we? If we vote in favor, so if there's anything that you wanted to put on the table, go ahead councillor Lesser.
Just I've seen more people since the first reading. It's actually come up again online about more fireworks going off and. I can see there's, there's quite a few people that seem upset by it. So I think it's, it's timely that we're doing this.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I did get a couple notes. With some people upset that they're actually going off councillor Dares?
Yeah, just to follow up with that, with what councillor Lesser had said, I. I received calls from somebody that lives on Argyle Street this past week that. People were firing off fireworks, but they're just going over the roofs of people's houses and landing their backyard. So it was a very hazardous situation. Anyway, I did. I did indicate that we were discussing this bylaw, and I'm sure that this will satisfy that individual.
Yeah. I got, I got the same, the same information, and this is not just about noise. It's not just about the animals, it's about our veterans. Our seniors, you know, it's just, it's really a protective mechanism for everyone. So is there any more discussion around this one before we vote? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Okay, so we're back to the commercial vehicle parking in residential area and site-specific. Development agreement. I'll read it again. The recommended motion is that council approves second reading to a text amendment. To the MPS and LUB to create enabling policies that would allow commercial vans larger than sixty-eight. Oh, four kilograms, fifteen thousand pounds. To be permitted on residentially zoned lots by development agreement. And that council approves second reading to a site-specific development agreement. To allow one commercial van of up to eight thousand six hundred and eighteen kilograms. That's nineteen thousand pounds to be parked at 170 Pleasant Street. Under PID number 90209198. So I'm looking for that motion councillor Heather Hatfield, second by councillor Dares. Any more discussion on this one? Go ahead councillor Dares.
Yeah, just, I just want to point out that in this case, I think the important. Phrase here is site-specific, though this isn't opening up the door for everybody. And then this in particular circumstance, you know, it was very, the owner of the property. Has made allowances for the, the parking of the vehicles that has. Limited or no impact on the neighbors, that the sightlines, you know, if not. Out on the side of the road or out close to the side of the road, so I think. The owner of the, of the business has, has gone to lengths to ensure that there was a limited impact, but. More importantly, this is not opening up the door for everybody to park a, a, a commercial van in their yard.
Yeah. Very important, thank you for that. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, thank you. And the food bank development and the recommended motion there is that council approves second reading. To amend the MPS and LUB to change the permitted uses section listed under the O1 zone. To allow existing institutional uses. Regardless of whether they are contained within an existing building. And amend the definition of existing to exempt institutional uses which are located within the O1 zone. That's regarding to the food banks. Like to make that motion. Okay, deputy mayor, second by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, thank you. New business. Paving and patching, 2022 season. The recommended motion is that council award the tender for paving and patching for the 2022 season. To Aberdeen. Paving Limited is recommended by the manager of Public Works. Councillor Lesser, second by councillor Hatfield. Any discussion there? Go ahead deputy.
I just think it's important for the public to know that we don't pave our own roads, we don't have the equipment to do that, we hire out. And oftentimes we are at. I guess the choice of Aberdeen when they decide to open up for pavement to happen. I mean, if we could make it happen, we would pave every road everywhere and. But if you traveled anywhere in Nova Scotia over the last little bit, it's not just a Yarmouth problem, it's definitely. You know, a problem all over, so I believe there's close to a half a million dollars. Worth of money going into pavement this year, so that's one of the, the biggest complaints I, I hear kind of out in the public, so just. FYI, I guess for the public, kind of just to let them know where we're at with that, and we, we hope to get the roads fixed up as quickly as we can.
Good stuff. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Taxi bylaw amendment. The recommended motion there is that council approve first reading to amend the taxi bylaw that corrects numbering. For registered summary offense ticket. I read that twice. Looking for, for the change, but it was literally was the numbering, so. Who wants to make that motion? Councillor Bell. Second by councillor Dares. Anybody want to speak to that, CAO?
Yeah, I'd like to explain it because I think it's important for council and. And maybe to some, some degree the public to, to understand why we're doing this, so. When we pass a bylaw. We can register that bylaw under the summary proceeding, summary offense proceedings act. And certain offenses within our bylaw can then be ticketed. A bylaw enforcement officer can walk up and, and write you a ticket, otherwise it's what's called a long-form process and it's. It's not as quick and convenient, so. We had certain offenses under our taxi bylaw that were registered under the summary proceedings act. Summary offense proceedings act, but we then amended the bylaw and it changed the numbering. And it's important that the numbering aligns with the offenses as are registered with the summary offense proceedings act. So this is just a bit of housekeeping so that we get back in alignment. With those particular offenses that we have the ticketing capability for, so. That's something that we, we kind of goofed, I guess, the last time we amended. And got the numbering a little, a little out of alignment, so, so this is to correct that.
Thank you. Okay. Are we good?
I, I should, if I could just add one more point to that, your worship is, and this is for councils information, is it does take upwards of a year. At times to get these, these bylaw offenses registered under the regulations. And so it's a much easier process to, to renumber the bylaw than to go back to the province and ask them to update the, the regulations, so. Again, when we pass by law amendments, as, as we did earlier this evening around, or around the fireworks. In order to have the ticketing ability for that offense, it will take, it will take many months, and I dare say. Perhaps even a year to be able to, to right on the spot, write a ticket. For that offense, there are ways to, to charge, but it's just a little more involved.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. The tender results for 2023 salt truck. Recommended motion there is that council award the tender for a 2023 salt truck to East Coast International in the amount of. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars plus HST. So they were the only bidder is that. So okay, let's get the motion on the floor, so councillor Lesser. And second by deputy mayor. So discussion folks? I mean, obviously they were the only bidder, but it must have been a good bid because. It wouldn't have ended up on the table, I don't think, go ahead councillor Dares.
Yeah, I, I can tell you that for the most part, some of these. Some of the dealers aren't bidding because they quite honestly can't get the equipment. I know that we've gone through this at the waste park and recently just purchased a, a one, or a dump truck for the waste park. And again, only had one bid. Because, and we, we actually closed a tender for a, just a pickup truck. In this past week and it's, the delivery date is some 120 days out. For a pickup truck, so. Gives you an example of the, the difficulties people are having, so I'm not surprised there's only one tender, or one bid on the tender.
And the price is a little higher than was anticipated when we were setting the budget, so. But again, that's, it's hard to predict these days what. What vehicles and equipment are going to cost, so.
Exactly, have you bought a two-by-four lately? You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. Go ahead deputy.
I just think it's important just to note that in the notes, the last vehicle was purchased in '08, so almost fourteen to fifteen years worth of service, so. When you, when you spread the cost out over that long and given the safety that it provides, I, I think it's a good purchase, so just heads up to the community that the last one is. Kind of see, has served its purpose and moving on to some new equipment.
Good point.
Okay, we ready for the vote? All those in favor? Aye, contrary. Motion carried. Tender results sidewalk and curb program. So the recommended motion there is that council award the sidewalk and curb program for the 2022 season. The D's decorative concrete. And there were two bids there, okay, deputy mayor, second by councillor Lesser. Any discussion there? Go ahead councillor Dares.
Just curious if there's a, a list of the intended work to be done this summer.
We can, we can ask the manager of Public Works. Perhaps for the committee of the whole, we can have that.
Thank you.
Councillor Hatfield, now?
I just noted, along with the other tender results that we're looking at tonight, that inflation is definitely. A factor and, and that we did have competitive bid this time and that the. Successful bidder was significantly less than, than. The second bidder, so I'm just wondering, obviously those are equivalent, it, you know. They're, they're equivalent expenditures, but with the price increase. I'm assuming that we have a budget and we will work. Will prioritize within that budget, so we may not be able to do everything that we had anticipated doing. This year, is that, that's fair to say?
That's exactly it.
Yeah, okay. Great, thanks.
Thank you, councillor Lesser?
Just, I guess a point of order of the recommended motion that's written. It's not how you write it, but it does say sidewalk and cub.
Yeah, it's.
I don't know. Okay. And I had to talk, it's sidewalks and curbs I have to talk, so. I had to say something.
I wouldn't have taken the vote without you saying something. That would have been disrespectful. Okay, we're good for the vote folks? All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. And deer management working group, and the recommended motion is that council appoint three representatives from the Department of Natural Resources. To the deer management strategy working group. CNN Wilson, Tricia Fleming and Deanna Nos. Councillor Heather Hatfield, second by the deputy mayor. Any discussion there? I have a question, when are we gonna get moving? Go ahead councillor Hatfield, sorry.
Just getting myself on, on mute, just a, a question as to. I assume that those three people have been approached and, and are willing to sit on this committee and. Are up to date as to what our plans are.
Your worship, I'll let Lindsay speak to that.
So when I reached out to DNR, they had actually responded and requested that those three individuals be on the committee?
Perfect.
Good.
Thank you. So we're moving right along with that, eh?
So the next step, your worship, is there's some information going out. I, I approved it, or I, I guess I commented on, I won't say necessarily approved it. Gave Mike some feedback on some communication stuff to go out. To do two things, as one is to educate the public that the town is doing, is planning to do something, not sure what yet. But we're gonna form a working group and create a strategy, and there's a call to action for, for, for members of the community to, to volunteer. And so he's also established a, a website where people can go and start to see the information around this issue, so. Yeah, we're, we're getting going, it's just, it's important that as we're soliciting for volunteers that they can see the information about. What it is we're actually trying to do, yeah.
Yeah, and, and also important, I think we discussed this. And I know Mike is, is on, so Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but. But it's, it's important that we get the varying. I lost my word. You know, varying. Aspects of this, so some people may not want to do this, some people may want to do this, some people are desperate for it. We just want to make sure all those voices are at the table, which I know will. Will be very clear to the public.
In this, in the solicitation, we're, we're kind of asking. Kind of why they want to be on the committee, and we're hoping that their answer to that will tell us a little bit about their, their perspective, and, and your worship, I agree, is that you want diversity of perspective. And background and so on on the committee, so that, so that all voices, as, as much as can be possible, all voices are heard and considered.
Perfect, thank you councillor Lesser?
I think it's, I think we've said it a number of times, but we haven't, no decisions we made on this. Of what's gonna happen, and that's what the working group is. And people that are concerned either way, whether they're concerned about the amount of deer and think we're not maybe doing something fast enough. Or have suggestions on it, or people who may be, you know, animal rights people who may be thinking of a different option. Everybody that has reached out to me, and it's, it's actually been a pretty good topic. To get the public involved. And I've said, put your name forward, whether, doesn't matter what side of the fence you're on, put your name forward, and. I think as long as, as long as we have that balance. We want to, we will want to, we don't want it seeing like it's only people in favor of one side or the other, so. I think that's an important fact, or thing to mention.
Sure is. Okay, anyone else?
Just your worship, I'm, I'm gonna propose. That the, the two council appointees to this committee serve as the nominating committee of the citizen. Applications. Rather than have all of council do that, if that, if that meets with your pleasure, and they'll make nominees based on their careful review of the applications.
Yeah, more than, more than appropriate, is everybody okay with that? Yeah. That's good, that's good. Okay, so we're ready for the vote? All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Council advisory committees, committee of the whole, deputy mayor, you want to take that?
The recommended motion, that council approved the amended citizen appointment process policy.
So moved, second by councillor Lesser. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, deputy?
Recommended motion, that council repeal the current MPS LUB amendment policy and replace the MPS LUB amendment expense policy.
Okay. Second or councillor Bell Hatfield? Any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, go ahead.
Recommended motion, that council amend the downtown music policy is recommended by staff.
Second by councillor Lesser. Any discussion? All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Public transit nominating committee. Who's on that one? You want to take that there deputy?
Recommended motion, that council amend section 10.2 of the citizen advisory committee policy. From seven elected and or volunteer members on the public transit advisory committee to none. Don't want to read the other one? You want to read the other one too?
With this one? No, let's go with this one and then, okay, so second by councillor Bell. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead.
So just kind of a heads up for why we did this, oh, unpaid power bill. During the selection process, we only had five people apply citizens, and there were. Four seats available, so instead of kicking one person off, we thought it would be nice just to bring everybody along. So that's why, the reason for this, just to open it up, so every citizen who did apply to be on it will have a seat there and. Therefore making room for them, that's why this amendment's here now.
Job. Go ahead councillor Hatfield. Councillor Bell.
And, and just to note that there's also room still on the committee for. A member of the community that services individuals buying passes for the bus service, so if. We're still looking for someone. Who, you know, in the retail sector who, who might have a different perspective and be able to. Provide some guidance to the committee with regards to the sale and, and distribution of the tickets, so. So there is, the availability is there for us to slide an individual in when we can identify one.
Excellent. Good stuff, okay. So moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried, and the second part there deputy?
Recommended motion, that council elect Rose Muse, Elaine Berry, Brian Camo, Alicia Pritchard and Roger Doucette to the public transit advisory committee.
Okay, second by councillor Heather Hatfield. Just going by whoever's hand goes up for. All those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Okay, thank you, citizen advisory committees, planning advisory, so who's on planning? Councillor Dares, do you want to? Do those motions?
If I can see them, hang on a second.
It's flipped, it's trying to flip back and forth, it's.
Yeah, I know, it's crazy here.
Or I can read them.
Well, I'll probably find them in here in a second, just, are we, where are we at, 10?
We are at 12, 12B, yeah.
12B. Gosh. Okay. Sorry about this, I'm just, I'm trying to use this on my phone, let's be a second.
Yeah, it's not easy. It's flipping back and forth and losing the pages and. I usually have to have Lindsay print out the agenda for me.
Is this in regards to the accessory buildings?
Amendment to the LUB institutional zone.
The recommended motion was that council approve first reading to amend the land use bylaw. LUB to change permitted accessory buildings in the institutional zone, one, I dash one, to allow larger accessory buildings. And in particular, this pertains to the golf course.
Okay. So moved, I need a second or please? Councillor Bell? Any discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor, oh, sorry, go ahead there CAO and, and councillor.
I just want to make a quick comment, and that was the planner's recommendation on this one, and, and what you're approving. Is that for, for all institutional. Properties that they can have accessory buildings as a percentage, up to 10% of the, of the lot size, as opposed to an absolute limit. By square footage, which I think makes perfectly good sense. And, and it's a, it's gonna be a good amendment that will hopefully prevent us from having to make other similar tweaks to the, to this part of the bylaw in the future.
Yeah, and, and so. The, the. The earlier one we did where it was by. You know, it didn't open the door, this one does, this is for, for everything, so. That, that's good news, go ahead councillor Dares. that that's good news. Go ahead, Counselor Daers.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, yes, it does open the door. However, if you look at the town map and or the town zoning map and look at the number of institutional properties and the size of them, I don't think it's going to be an issue.
Oh, no, this is a, this is a, this is a good thing. This is helpful. Yeah. Okay. All those in favor? Contrary? Motion carry. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor.
The recommended motion is that council approve amendments to the Public Participation Program policy for the addition of a five-minute presentation and a five-minute rebuttal for members of the public. And in discussion, just before you, you, I'll wait for a second or I guess.
Yeah, can I have a second or? Okay, Counselor Heather?
So just, just for your information, and this is not intended to to be a restrictive policy, it's to give the the chairperson of the committee the the ability to police the the presenters, so that you can cut them off at five minutes if need be, so that it doesn't become a repetitive or redundant presentation. But certainly, you know, it's not one of those where we're going to turn off the mic at the five-minute mark, if in fact somebody has additional information. So it's, it gives the chairperson of the committee some ability to police the meeting without you know, without, I guess, being too restrictive.
Yep, it's it's a good one. And and I know at council, at at council, I usually just ask, are we okay for them to to continue? You know, it's just, you're right, sometimes it gets repetitive.
I've learned as a member of the 100 guys who share that a lot can be said in five minutes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, and encouragement to do so is always a good thing.
Exactly.
Okay, Counselor Bell?
I'm just, I just wanted to point out that that Public Participation Program policy that we are also at the Planning Committee looking at streamlining that process, so that instead of having to have two meetings in order to facilitate a public participation before any recommendation comes to council, it will be done in one meeting. And there will, there'll be advance notice for the public well in advance of the meeting, so that they have that opportunity. So it's it's just, it's kind of a streamlining of of that that's the idea that that I think this particular amendment has flown from. So that's, yeah.
Yeah, that's good to know. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary? Motion carry. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Daers.
You're welcome.
Reports for information, our good manager report. Questions for committee chairs? Any questions for committee chairs? I had a couple. Okay, we'll start with Counselor Lesser.
It's not really for a committee chair, but I'm going to see if I can squeeze it in here anyway. I wanted to kind of give a shout out to our fire chief, Mike. I wrote to him this past week, somebody was concerned around a senior safety around fires and, you know, what would happen if they're living alone and you know, would they understand the layout of their house and that type of thing? And he didn't just answer the question, he, he's now volunteered to go out to meet with the senior and it it says a lot about our fire department that they're actually willing to go and meet with somebody to make them feel better. So that was a, I felt really good about that. So I wanted to pass that along.
Thank you for that. That's, yeah, he's excellent. He's excellent. Who else had their hand up? Deputy Mayor, did you?
Just from the Mariner Center expansion, our last meeting, there was some discussion about the track down in Parambar that might be coming to councils in a little bit, just a a heads up that that might be coming down the tube. Just funding for some improvements down there that was kind of on the books for for many years. The town had carried many, had carried money over for a year, for years, I believe $200,000 for 10 years now, or quite a while. But anyhow, there may be something, a committee formed and something coming from our goal, the request. So just heads up, that kind of came out of that meeting.
Thank you.
And given the the awesome showing from Y C M H S at our recent track meet, it'd be really great to have some more athletes go away and come out on top. So kudos to them as well.
Awesome. So Counselor Hatfield, or Heather Hatfield, the the Step Up Yarmouth is on the go?
Yes, it is. Yes, Mike and Dave Solos, Mike Carter and Dave Solos did, or I think it was Wade, actually, but Mike Carter was involved. And Wade and Dave Solos did an excellent interview. I think it's on our Facebook page on the Step Up program, so encouraging everyone to put a pot of flowers out or or a pot of anything, it doesn't have to be flowers, out on your front step to help celebrate the Year of the Garden. And just to welcome all our our visitors coming off of of the cat and and coming into town from whatever route for for this summer. So we're really excited about about that. You can pick up, we do have little sticks, planter sticks that say Step Up Yarmouth, so they can pick that up at Town, those up at Town Hall and stick it in their plant and planter and have it on their front, front step. As well, talking about Communities in Bloom, our judges will be in town July, I think it's the 17th, 18th, and 19th. So we're going to be a bit challenged with the car show actually happening that weekend. And the day that the car show is finished, our judges will be arriving in town. So we'll be doing a quick cleanup of the town to prepare for our judges. But we're really excited after two years of not having them be able to come, that they can now come in and look at our town and give us feedback on what we're doing. So we're really excited about that.
I've, I'll tell you, I've cleaned up after the car show before. And it, and it wasn't hurt. It wasn't hurt. People are so respectful. They're so thankful to have that event on Main Street and of that magnitude. And I I just remember I took a garbage bag from Town Hall to, I was going to say Collins, but it wasn't, the Dairy Queen Street, John Street, and and back, and I didn't have maybe three odd pieces that had fallen out of a garbage can. So.
I think the the Car Show Committee has a really awesome cleanup, cleanup committee, and they do an excellent job. So I'm sure that they'll, they'll do that as well this year. So.
That, that's quick timing. That's a quick turnaround. Ah, Counselor Daers and then Counselor Lesser?
So just to follow up, I I'd like to just talk a little bit more about Communities in Bloom, given that our chairperson is out of the country. And anyway, and it's planting season. But you may have noticed that the Vancouver Street Boulevard was planted today. David Solos was out there for the better part of the day. I think tomorrow his plan is to be with the youth from the school to plant the the gardens at the Fisherman's Memorial. There will also be other volunteers out this weekend, I believe, during the the Dorries at the Mariner Center and a few other locations that that Communities in Bloom is responsible for. The parks people have had, and of course, part of the Communities in Bloom program. I think there's 25 planters that have been placed downtown, and they, they did, this looked marvelous. But and on another note, Communities in Bloom will be partnering with the 4-H youth who have, are celebrating their 100th anniversary, I think, this year. I think it's 100. And because we thought that there was a close association with the Mariner Center property with the 4-H historically, we've convinced the the youth that that might be an appropriate place for their garden. So we're, we're just in the planning process right now, but there will be a 4-H garden adjacent to the new Splash Park. And it'll be situated close to where the the benches and the, you know, for the the parents to sit and watch their kids. And so I think it's a nice thing, and it involves the youth, and it's going to be a great, a great partnership. So anyway, just thought I'd let you know.
Yeah, that's excellent. All great, all great stuff. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Thanks. On Communities in Bloom as well, I saw David out the other day, actually, on his way, I think, to plant. And asked him if if anybody in the community has ever documented the amount of the Japanese cherry trees, because when that, when those hit, like, obviously, the judges aren't in town. But we're going up and down the streets, there's, there's hundreds of them in our community, and they look like, I mean, obviously, when they start falling, they they can be a little messy, and that's what's happening now. But they look incredible when they're in full bloom. And I'm not sure, I said to him, is there some way maybe of capturing that that could be shared with the committee at some point? I don't, and I don't, I'm not really, I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure what the answer was. I wasn't really through for the answer. But I think he said that there is a possibility of doing a presentation or something along those lines. So I think that's a, I don't know if other communities have that many of those Japanese cherry trees in a community as much as we do.
Yeah, they're gorgeous, no doubt about that. Anyone else? I did, I did want to mention that I think you're, you're all aware that the Lieutenant Governor has asked that the mayor's office and his office do a garden party commemorating the Queen's Jubilee. So that will be July the 16th at Frost Park. Lindsay and I are are working on the logistics of that, so it's, it'll be a big deal. They absolutely loved the one we had a couple of years ago. So I was quite excited when they reached out and and asked if we would, we would do that with them. I'm there in Halifax next week for for the Queen's Jubilee at the Lieutenant Governor's mansion. Also, also at an MIT, the whole MIT project, which I really have to update everybody on. There's, there's graduation for that program. That's next week as well, so I'll be in the city for that. And then this weekend, actually Sunday morning, I'm hosting the Governor General's leadership team, and they they do this, I I can't remember, I think it's every five years. The Governor General puts together a leadership team of people throughout Canada, and they send them off to the different provinces, and they do, they they visit communities and and businesses and organizations and they just get a feel for, you know, what's going on in in the entire country. They all come back and they they debrief. So they have never, in all of their history since 1955, they've never been in, they've never been in Yarmouth. And they reached out and asked if if I would host them. So I'm going to do that. I've asked Angelique with the REN to to work with me on that. So we're going to take them for breakfast. There's 14 of them for breakfast on Sunday morning. Talk about the REN Economic Development, the growth of the town, which I actually did with the Minister of Economic Development provincially a couple of weeks ago. She was in town and asked. We did that little downtown tour and and just important to help folks understand where we were and where we are and how we got there. And they get really excited about it, like everything, it's it's not just the paint, it's the whole program and and so all those pieces. So we'll do with the Governor General's team, we'll do MIT, we'll do the REN, we're going to do, they've asked for a tour of Ignite, so those types of things. And then I guess I'm going to be a tour guide for a few minutes, just to go through town and help them understand how we grew from where we were to where we are now and and future plans. And I'll take that back to the Governor General and and so I'm pretty excited about that. So it's a busy, it's a busy June, it feels like. It's a really busy June. There's a lot going on. And so, okay, is there anybody else that wants to share anything? All right, so we're good there. Addition, additions, okay? Paint the park, deputy?
I received a few messages and some pictures from a few concerned citizens last week about the condition of South End Playground. Doors ripped off at the bathrooms, the bathroom smashed up. Just vandalism at its, at its best, I guess, or worst, I guess I should say. And once again, this is no reflection on our Parks Crew. I know Todd and the boys are down there steady trying to fix things up. I know the fence alone has been fixed four times since December. I was down there in December for Myra Ritchie's Santa Claus candy giveaway, and the condition from them to even now has deteriorated quite a bit. But long story short, what do we do? When vandalism happens from, you know, our own, I I think we flip it back onto our own community to turn it around, maybe have some sense of pride and respect in our area. And so from that message, and I would like to say, I I really appreciate the respectful way that people reached out. And we came up with an idea to do a Paint the Park on June 18th, or yes, June 18th at 10:00 a.m., which is a Saturday. And we're inviting the community, anyone who wants to come out, get on your working clothes and come on down. And we're going to paint and sweep up glass and take that park back and make it our own again. And hopefully with that, with the community stepping up, there'll be a sense of pride there that kind of looks over to protect it, and hopefully it can be a place of enjoyment for us for many years to come. After speaking with Todd, I'm going to go down and meet with him sometime next week. And Counselor Daers, I believe, is going to join me as well. As he pointed out in the email earlier, it would be nice to kind of just walk the park and do an assessment as a whole. While we're making, hey, well, the sun is shining, let's see what we can do to fix up things tip top. And I know the community always steps up for these things, so I just wanted to say thank you before it even started, because I started a events page last night, which is close to 100 people. Kevin North had reached out today, we did a little Y95. So just wanted to make council aware that this is going down, our Parks Crew's on board. And also, the Wesleyan Church and South Church last year, close to the end of October, we were going to do a Paint the Skate Park event. And of course, weather crept in a little too early, we didn't get it done. So there is paint and paintbrushes and supplies already there. So this doesn't cost anything to the town. It's just more about pushing it out and motivating it, although there could be some boards and stuff that might be replaced around. And anyhow, just wanted to put that out to council and the public, and hopefully we have a great day and take our park back and keep vandalism at its lowest moving forward.
Awesome. I love it. I had some people reach out and just say, you know, when are you going to replace some of the old swings? Little things like that. So once we get her painted up and cleaned up and a little bit of pride back, we start looking at start looking at the infrastructure there. Counselor Lesser?
Just wondering, deputy, I'm assuming that there's going to be obviously some costs involved with that. They they'd have to get supplies and that kind of thing. Is that something we we should be looking at, making a motion to support financially in some way? Or is it not a, I mean, I'm thinking that supplies aren't going to come free, like, if they're going to paint it?
The the paint part is there now. There may be a little money needed for wood or, you know, I I know there's, Todd sent some pictures there earlier of the stage that it may be able to be patched up just a little bit and at least be made to look decent. So it it might be a nice idea just to have a a little bit of flow there, so Todd doesn't have to go 100% into his budget, and we can make sure things are all cleaned up at the same time.
It's C A O.
Yeah, this, it's, if it's, if it's park maintenance, there is a budget for that. Todd does have a budget. It's not a rich budget. But given the amount of donation that that I think is involved here for the for the paint supplies, if if they're going to get in replacing wood or whatever, he has a budget. You don't need to make a motion for that. You've you've approved the budget and and Todd is, Todd is the Parks Coordinator, so he can make that call.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Lesser.
Thanks, folks. Okay, anything else?
Just to mention that it is Pride Month. I happily wear my bracelet that T C R C produced and gave out. And I know we have a new bench I see down around Frost Park, and I talked to Mike, and I know some posts are coming and hopefully a flag and whatnot, but just wanted to give a shout out that we do support that 100% and something will be coming out. And also, just a little guilty pleasure, I guess, there'll be a Mac Meal event tomorrow in honor of John McNeil, going on at four of our local schools, and that's 100% funded by the community. So once again, thank you to the community for doing that and stepping up and honoring a teacher who is near and dear to a lot of us and looked out for many of us during our school year. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Lesser.
Thanks. When you mentioned Pride Month, I I just noticed this morning on Water Street driving along, on one of the telephone poles right around, I think Killam's Wharf, somebody has, I think it looks like maybe crocheted a really nice material around one of the, one of our poles in a rainbow color, which I'm not sure if that's something that the town's been involved in or.
No, no, I I want to say that there's a group out there doing stuff like that. And it pops up every once in a while. And I can't remember the name of the group. Bell, do you know the name of the group? I thought like Ann Jones and the crew was involved, but maybe not.
Your worship, I'm not sure. It could be the Rug Hooker. Your worship, I'm not sure. It could be the Rug Hookers, the, and there's, but there's also, there's several other groups. So it, it could be the carpet, the, the rugby's or the carpet baggers, I think they're called. Or it could be some of the knitting groups because they, they get together and they knit as well. So, yeah, lots, lots of, lots of arts and culture going on in our community for sure. And it's wonderful to see those little pop up installations. Yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
And that close to the ferry as well was, is nice that people get off the boat, recognize our what Canada's all about. So that was, it was quite nice to see that this morning.
Yeah, absolutely.
I apologize. I said Pride Week. I meant Pride Month.
Pride Month. I thought you said Pride Month. Lindsay, the flags. Do we have a pride flag?
I can't say for sure, but I can check tomorrow.
Yeah.
If not, I have one.
Okay, if, if not, then Derek, Derek has one. The pride flag and I, I say the Ukrainian flag, but you know, it was, it was brought to our attention that, you know, there, there are folks that want us to put the Ukrainian flag up. But I think they weren't aware of the fact that we actually light up town hall in yellow and blue. And that was Todd and his team. So we do that and you go by in the evening, you can see that. But Lindsay, if we have a Ukrainian and a pride flag, we can switch those out every week till the end of the month at least. And if we just have one, that's, that's okay. If we just have the pride one because we do light up town hall. We do it. We do it big.
I have the Ukrainian flag as well if you.
Awesome.
All kinds of flags. So if you need anything, let me know.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. So Lindsay, I'll leave that with you to, to work out with the flag, flag folks that legs up on my flagpole. Okay, anything else? Anyone? Oh, I'll say this. Happy birthday, Yarmouth. I think we're 263 today. 262? 261?
261.
What year were we born? Talk to me, Jeffrey.
You're wishing our mandate away.
1761.
I was thinking we are 250 years old in 2009. That's why, however, how I was adding it. We're 261 years young. So is our infrastructure. Okay, we're good there. Approval of invoices, please. Deputy mayor and councillor Lesser, all those in favor? Contrary. Motion carried. Then the date of the next meeting, I do want to say thank you deputy for, I know you signed your name probably 500 times since I've been out of the country. I'm back though. Okay, date of next meeting is July the 14th. And C A O, do we have it in camera?
We do.
Okay, motion to go in camera, folks. Okay, deputy mayor, second by councillor Dairs, all those in favor? Contrary. Good.